Bringing the report. Ramsey County District, please staff your pledge.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of America, to the stand on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, I said it's gonna be a little better.
Your kisses on the phone.
Only about an hour.
Yep. Careful, careful.
More than that rambling was.
Glad to hear ya. We just... Approval of the minutes.
Move to approval second.
There's a motion in second. All in favor, signal of the same eye.
Aye.
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 Opposed, be non-motion carried. Approval of the agenda.
Move to approval. Second.
There's a motion in a second to approve the agenda. All in favor, signal of the same eye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same side. Be non-motion carried. Roger Gunnarson is up first.
Much as I hate to do this, um, I think I'm gonna have to go with this one estimate on the Memorial Building wall because I simply can't find anyone else to get a bid. Nobody in the state of North Dakota does this sort of work. I talked to Deeper and Brick in Grant Works to try and find somebody for doing tuck pointing on the north side of the Memorial Building wall. If you will, look up, you can see where the bricks toward the top are. Quite a few of them are in bad shape and some broken. Anyway, last fall, I gotten an estimate from Carr Tuck Pointing out of Iowa. And they had done work here before, oh gosh, twenty years ago probably, on the Memorial Building. And I think they did a really good job and they've done, they were around doing a lot of buildings in their hometown at that time. And they're the only ones I can get an estimate from. I had gotten four names of people from Deeper and Brick. One was retired, another one they phoned disconnected. I got ahold of one down by, I think it was Saint Cloud, and they kept saying they were gonna come up here and then finally this morning, I called them back and they said, "No, they're just not gonna make it up here at all, not even to look at it." So... I do have the one estimate from Carr and I talked to them this morning. They said it's still good. They gave the estimate last October for forty-five thousand eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars. And yes, I have budgeted for this amount for Jeff. So... Jeff got a chance to look today through the booklet a little bit that they said they're very thorough in what they're going to do. Um, and you guys just got a couple sheets there to look at. And I think the book is up here somewhere or somebody wants to look through it, but... Other than I don't like just getting one estimate, I see no reason not to have an idea. And I don't know what we could do to get another estimate.
I've been thinking about this. This first I...
How long have I thought about it? So, since last fall.
First I...
Oh, sorry. Sorry.
So, you budgeted it last year and then budgeted with the anticipation you might want to get it done this year?
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, like, when the Tur- you know, with Saint Joseph's, they tuck pointed a few years ago. Who did they have to do?
Just a few years ago? Or was it many years ago?
I remember them having something done maybe at that point. I don't know, but I remember they tuck pointed a few years back.
Yep, and I wouldn't doubt that. That was Carr that did that at the same time.
It's quite possible. I just remember them doing it at one point in time.
Who did the middle school?
I don't know.
Yes, I was just thinking of like the larger buildings that are brick around here.
That would die when I was on school.
Yeah, so who, how they had to do it maybe?
If I remember right, that was like a quarter million dollars. I would check with the school for sure. See if they, I'm sure they must have a record of that. Tom died in the middle.
How long is the bid hold for?
We'd be probably good till September.
Oh, okay, so we got a little bit of time to check out maybe a few other people and see if there's a...
Do you think they know what their schedule is?
Yeah.
Depending on the brick, uh...
What makes you think it needs to be done?
Well, well, I'd say they'll pick one up and you could see where the mortar's coming out and the bricks are starting to come out.
That's the building isn't like that?
No.
How come?
How come it isn't like that? Because along the north wall here, there are, uh... At the top of the wall, there's basically clay tile, I guess they call them tile. They're about this wide and this long. And they said their joints up there, uh, the mortar was coming out, it was letting water run, like, basically inside the wall. And once they fix that up, that will come, take care, should take care of the problem here. And the rest, the whole rest of the building does not have that on top of the wall. They have, uh, it just sealed up somehow, so there isn't a issue. And I've looked all around and no, it's just this area here where those tile are. That I'm sure was original with the building. And, um, once that's sealed up then, but we still gotta fix up stuff that's been damaged. Don't want bricks falling out onto somebody as they walk away.
But you think you need to go all the way to the ground?
It doesn't have to necessarily go all the way to the ground. There's quite an area up, up close to the top that you can see where it's bad. And they will come and they will check. They said the whole painted area, they will check over and see if any of the rest of it needs to be ground out and redone too.
I see a pretty extensive block they got here.
Yeah. Yeah, it is. How long will this wall have done it?
That's the first time I've ever been done in a middle school.
When did they do it?
When did they do it? I'm on the scoreboard, so I would guess it's eight, ten years ago.
Eight, ten years ago. Did they have the pictures of the building?
And I'd guess, and they're probably similar timeframe buildings. When was, uh, when Memorial Building done?
About thirty-five, thirty-four.
Yeah, exactly about the same time. I think that was thirty-six, the middle school.
WPA money?
No, it was, uh, it was something else, but that, that very well could have been.
The middle school was... If I remember right, some of the funding, I think, came through the Heritage Fund because it's a historic building. And, uh, I know it all was. I got an idea, I'm just guessing, but if I remember right, I thought maybe they got a hundred thousand on the deal from the historic.
I guess I could talk to Amy Monson through a few and see if we could get any funding because of Memorial Building is also just a little bit...
Absolutely, but look into that before we move forward in any of this. Swan type of the superintendent. I don't know if he'd have all the answers right away, but I don't know if the lot to be, I would think would happen or Tom's eye would have the answers. But that historical money, we should look into that because, like you say, is it on your register?
Oh, yeah.
It is, yeah. But I would definitely think we should look into that. I got a... I got an idea that you got to apply for that money before you do the work, but I'm not entirely sure.
Yeah, you know, I think in the past, we would have had to have, um, like, months in advance. Seems to me when we had, or was it the shingling job here in the Sheriff's Souls or something? Seemed to me we had to have deadlines by December, if I remember right, or February, then the work was done the following year.
I'd imagine they'd have specific grant periods.
Yeah. Well, I can talk to Amy and see what she has to say.
I, you know, we should definitely go that route. Because I would venture to guess that they'd have a substantial amount of money they could put into something like that. Because they haven't cut those funds, the state has.
Yeah.
So, that money would be, I think, there. You might have to wait till next year.
Yeah, well...
And there might be such a thing as we want to do more in the building. If there's money like that available.
Yeah.
I mean, but the pictures appears it needs to be done. It's just a matter of, you know, if we can find a second estimate just to make sure they're in the ballpark.
I know, the middle school.
Yeah, and number two, you know, if we can find some additional funding sources to make it a little cheaper for us, that'd be a benefit.
And I know when it got done in the middle school, it made it look much, much better, you know, very, very good. I go by the day and I've looked at it and I, I don't know, it looks like it's kind of fading, but maybe it's just the day or the sunlight or something. But it really solid, made it a lot tighter. When they put the windows in, I think that was an under quarter, I think, and they put into the windows, so... But they had to do that with that building to meet the historical.
Yeah, you can only do certain things.
They had to keep it up or the historical would be complaining about not keeping that building up. Yeah. There's a lot of spots like these pictures.
Yeah.
I walked by, I didn't walk by tonight, but I all looked at it.
You can't see all of it from the ground really, but majority of it, yeah.
So, they're seeing, like, that cap stuff that sits up on the outside of the brick, you know, the wall, and so the water's getting down underneath there and then coming in the back, I suppose, and it's getting the mortar loosened up and pushing around. That makes sense.
What's the date? When it was built? In the thirties?
Roughly thirty-five, thirty-four.
I think we should look into that first. I think, uh, take a solid bid and, uh, I'm sure Tom could, I'll let information out for that.
And even if Tom, if he said it was Carr, like I said, I'll still talk to Amy Monson and then I can maybe get back in June meeting and see what we find out.
This guy, when he stayed here from Iowa, I think that's who did it. So, I, I'm not sure, but I think that's who did it.
Kind of, with all the old brick buildings around, that there's not a tuck pointing company that's closer, it seems like a big...
Yeah.
It's tough work.
I'm sure.
You're up off the ground all the time, so I think they have a difficult time finding people to do it.
Yeah, you can't like this either. You gotta like against it.
Yeah. They did the duct pointing to that building and put the windows in and fixed the roof. Had all done that, I don't know, maybe we should have.
He's from Brick. Yeah.
It's a historical building, it's a way to do it.
Oh, our roof should be good. We just had that, um, that's happened up years ago.
Well, the Memorial Building.
Yeah, Memorial Building.
And those...
You think the other sides of the building are pretty fair?
They are, you know, I was just looking at it today and it's, and they said the reason was that because of those tile, how it's built, whatever, it's letting the water in and it's letting down inside some, basically inside the wall. The guy that was here last fall.
You'd have to, uh, historical person, do you have a business mark?
Yeah. That's not true before. It's been a while.
You have, okay.
I've got our number.
I moved the table, this is all, was you on the first meeting and you won?
I'll say. Motion in second. All in favor, signal of the same eye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same side. Be non-motion carried. Anything else? Thank you.
Okay, first, uh, update on road projects. Ramsey County Eight, I'll let Greg talk about that. Greg's doing most of the inspection out there, so...
Ramsey County Eight, um, Mayo is gonna start doing the patching work tomorrow. They wanted to start today, but due to the rain and they had some issues with their plant getting started up, that got coming back tomorrow. Uh, they plan to start building the mainline paving, the overlay on Thursday, and then that should continue through the, uh, to about the middle of next week. Then they should have all the paving work done and then within the following couple of weeks, they got some cleanup type stuff that'll be taken care of, like getting the permanent striping down and there are a few prevent signs getting put in. But I'd say within probably three or four weeks, the whole project will be wrapped up and by the middle of next week, all the impact, traffic, coal, people taking care of, moving back, holding the two lanes the whole way.
They could do a lot of load limits after that.
That's their only...
Yeah, they're waiting for load limits to do the mainline. Um, they were gonna do the patching even without load limits because of the load limits they had on Highway twenty. They could actually, with a proper configuration semi, you can still haul a hundred and five. But they were gonna bring up light loads because they still have the load limits on the county road just to get the patching done. That way it wouldn't be load limits, they'd come off, they could hit the mainline full course.
You said that they're coming off tomorrow.
Yeah, we just got word. I just found out that it's tomorrow morning. So, any questions on eight? All right. We have the final invoice, or final payment invoice for paving on the contract of Ramsey County Nine with Nice River. And I'll finish up that project. Uh, most of that was retained, it was for twenty-two thousand six hundred and one dollars and forty-three cents.
Move to approval. Second. Motion in second. Load call, please.
Brett?
Aye.
Lighton?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye. Motion carried.
And along with that, uh, there's a paper, we have a piece of paper saying that we accept the final project, it's a final review acceptance. So, and it's, yeah, when we drove through it, it looks pretty good and everything, so we just need a motion for the chairman to sign that.
Engineers think it's all right?
Yeah.
I'm gonna approve. There's a motion in a second to approve and sign off on Ramsey County Nine. All in favor, signal of the same eye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same side. Be non-motion carried.
Here's the next item. I got the rates from, for renting excavator and trench packer. We are good for mobile and pulver insulation this summer. I talked to Ironhide, or Robcat in town, Butler, and I also contacted RDO. Remember, got back to me, but the low quotes were from Ironhide for forty-three hundred a month for the excavator and twenty-two hundred a month for the trench packer. So, I'd like a motion to rent those for three months. I don't know if we'll use them the whole three months, but that's my contract.
Did you have the figures on Butler? I'll take one of you.
Butler was fifty-two hundred a month on the excavator and they didn't have a trench packer.
Did you get a quote from General Equipment?
Not this time, I didn't. But I can tell you that it's gonna be tough to beat that forty-three hundred.
Yeah.
We might be able to find a cheaper trench packer, but it would be far below. And probably be maybe a hundred or maybe two hundred dollars a month cheaper.
I'm moving, please. Motion, is there a second?
I'll say.
Motion in a second.
O'Call, please.
Brett?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Lighton?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye. Motion carried.
I had the last item there, just for information, I did find a garage door opener from Lake Bumber and their bid was seven seventy-three thirty-one. Don't really get a motion, but just like, you know, we got it for a lot less than what first that was. And that's all I have? Thank you. Anybody else here?
Thank you, Kevin.
Can I ask you one quick question? Have you heard back from the state down the crossing at Whorville? Just out of curiosity, if they've scheduled anything in or...
Haven't signed the contract or nobody?
I was just...
What was your question on?
If you heard back from the state on the railroad crossing at Whorville. I just thought of it today when I knew what we're coming on, if we heard anything back on it or not.
Reminded you as soon as you...
Yeah, as soon as I hit the phone.
The first thing we'll see is a contract that they'll allow us to sign, maybe ten percent, so we haven't seen that yet.
Seen nothing on it on Grand Avenue.
No, and that one, they're gonna pay for all of it, so we won't have the contract either, but that'll probably get done sooner, I'm guessing, because it's two different railroad companies.
They'll, more than likely that is no.
Yeah, they'll, yeah, they'll give us an email or whatever.
Okay, thank you. Unfinished, uh, discussion on human resource. Andy.
Carrie has three items. My, one that is on the agenda, discussion on sheriff's department policies. I'd like to push towards the end of the meeting if we could, because I believe the sheriff was going to try and make it after the meeting, so if he doesn't make it.
He's doing his part.
Never mind. I'm prepared to go forward even if he doesn't make it.
Kind of what I thought that he wasn't gonna be here.
Not part of the memo, but I haven't talked to him since last week.
Oh.
Um, HR, I talked quite a bit with Chuck Porter, uh, visit through the Association of Counties in reference to HR more, more in reference to what's everybody else doing in the state. And he indicated that a larger counties, of course, have the full-time HR people task, Grant Works, Burley Williams. Smaller counties have a combination of either, it's like a full-time position, but part of the duties or HR or something else. And for independent contractors, he was only aware of three counties that have that type of an option. So, just kind of add a glance of what the state is doing. I did also talk to him a little bit about kind of a hierarchy of what an HR person would think would be kind of the most important types of things to hit with an HR professional for them to, like, review if the commission decided to use the funds that are available this year to do, like, um, independent contractor type of a thing for this year and then look at hiring for time for next year. Kind of want to hear his opinion on what he thought was a priority of things for people to look at in HR. And so, he did, um, provide kind of a top five in his opinion. Hiring recruitment selection processes, evaluation and training processes for different department heads, review of policies throughout departments to ensure that everybody's, you know, treated fairly among each department that they work with in the county, every citizen that comes in. Resource for any issues and employee concerns, harassment issues, things like that. He listed compensation and benefits administration kind of higher up, but, um, I don't know, I think evaluations and training, just my own personal evaluations and training, policy uniformity and consistency. Harassment type trainings, things like customer service type trainings may be beneficial. So, that was kind of his thoughts on what would be a priority if the commission did go with a contractor type thing for this year. Because my understanding from the last meeting, it was fourteen thousand, I thought was what the number was. Overall pros and cons versus independent contractor versus a part-time employee. Some pros to have an independent contractor, no office space, you don't have to provide equipment, um, less funded for benefits, less for employer contributions. Flexibility in how you're gonna use the resource typically in HR, somebody who's contracting for a position is an expert or specialized in that field, so they can, can hit the ground running. Cons, less control over the person and their work, they can come and go around how they please. Your rights are really governed by the contract that you draw up with them. If they fell and broke their ankle on the steps up to my office, you know, there's liability for things like that. If they create any kind of a training manual or anything to be used, that would be their rights. That's their product, so the county wouldn't own that, so that's kind of things to consider. That's what I found out about HR stuff. Any questions?
Would like this training manual, would Chuck say about something like that that could be a question? How do you put one of them together? Does the county, Association of Counties have a guide to put one together?
He maybe would have access to resources like that, but, um, if the county, if this county looked at taking on an independent contractor for this portion of the year and said, "We would like to see this, this type of a thing done." I imagine that they have a wealth of resources. I looked at some of the HR websites that HR professionals use and subscribe to and there's just banks of information that they could use. But I'm sure if I know from Chuck, they have through the Association of Counties for policy manuals or training booklets. Just thoughts, I mean, I always think it's nice to have, I think Ramsey County is certainly, you know, we're not a large county, we're not a tiny county, but there's issues that come up. And it would be nice to have a professional give guidance on those issues. That's just my sense.
The only problem, it turned out the last time, the contracted person we had, I mean, there was a concept of interest. I mean, there was no question that was there. And, um, if we hire another contracted person, they're bringing in running the same thing. I like the part-time idea, for somebody in the building, can look at taking something like this on. I guess the thing I'm against, the grown government. And not in favor of adding more people to our payroll because it's gonna be a difficult time to put a budget together. We've seen legislators struggle with it. I can see a need for it, but... And the biggest thing I learned from the contracted person we had is that the commission's gotta be able to lead and tell them what we want done. You know, they got their thoughts and handle certain things in a way, set up evaluations, so it's a standard form. What do you use, Kevin?
Uh, it's a standard form that's been around for...
Gosh.
Before I got here. So, that's how old it is too.
They don't vary much. Probably don't need to vary it much.
No, not in my, maybe in some other organizations, but not out there.
Not here. They don't like quality. I would ask them, then hire you, you know, make sure you're right hiring, you know, right after a question. What's a school out job? Do they have a resource person there?
Maybe a rebuilding administrator is essentially the, that and the business manager acts as the HR person.
They're still doing it that way?
Still doing it that way.
Do they have very old training?
I'm sure. I suppose, yeah.
Well, I agree that the contracted one did not work last time. It wasn't, it wasn't a body and a chair in the building, and I don't, I didn't like that. That basically only left the department heads able to get ahold of them and, you know, if we're gonna move forward, we, I think, we need to have some... Commission sold a little con, kind of... Yeah, no, no, literally not. Really co-con, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Other than with a few people here and there and, you know, if Kevin's employees needed somewhere to go, I don't really think they had anywhere to go. Yeah. You know, if you go to the third door on the left and there's a chair there and there's a person in the chair, well, then you have somebody to talk to.
Well, you know, I'm hearing some conflicting opinions here that, yeah, you really want somebody here at the third door on the left, but we don't wanna add another person to the payroll. So, the only really, uh, option would be a contracted person.
Or, or to sit back. Or a part-time person. Or, or a part-time person and, you know, think this through extensively before we make a decision. We've come this long without one, we don't need one tomorrow. You know, in our situation, it's so much different than the city's because we don't have a police chief or a sheriff when they're elected. And the people, you know, are the ones that elect that. Elect the auditor, they elect the treasurer, the recorder. There are four positions that the commission has very little control over.
State's attorney, the state's attorney. Yeah, you're right.
So, we don't have all the department heads that the commission has control. We can't fire the auditor, we can't fire the sheriff. We can ask the governor to do it, but we can't do it.
Well, there aren't a good reason, right?
So, we're not in the same position as a city where they have all the department heads and they're hired by the state commission.
Well, is that what we're worried about, is department heads, or are we worried about, you know...
Well, I'm not worried, yeah, I'm worried about all the employees, yeah. But the department heads are the ones that have control of their departments.
Right.
And generally, that's probably where the problem's gonna start, if you have harassment or if you have a hiring problem.
But we can still give them, the department heads, the tools to succeed.
Absolutely.
And hiring and dealing with their employees.
That would be my opinion. I'm, I'm thinking of it, you know, and I understand where you're coming from, but...
But to me, it's almost like adding a proactive resource.
I agree with you, yeah.
So that we, instead of getting to the point where we're saying, what are we going to do? Dip it in the bud. Plus, you know, like I said before, I think we do things very well here, but there's always room to get better.
I agree with you.
And the room to get better means through training, through additional resources when there's need to be help for hiring. The worst, my worst, one of the worst case scenarios would be is if we go and do something wrong and then we're walking into a god knows what to absolutely, you know, a severance package buyout, whatever, where maybe twenty thousand dollars upfront would save that problem. Because we have a good resource, we have expertise in the building, we had somebody that knew what they were doing or somebody to talk to when the situation occurred. I guess I just look at it as a, as a very proactive thing and I realize, I agree that we don't want to have to do our budget. But if there's a way that we can figure a way to fit it into what kind of we're budgeted at now, I mean, to me, an additional, say, twenty or twenty-five thousand dollars on a six-point-one-million-dollar budget is a good investment in resources.
Yes, I agree with you, but I mean, we've got to do it right.
Yeah, I agree. We have to get the right person, we have to do it right. But I just think, I just think it's a good, it's a positive use of dollars. Especially maybe we can find some savings someplace else to kind of offset it a little bit. I mean, I don't, I know that's a difficult thing to do with how we're doing things, but I, I don't, I guess I just look at it from the aspect of, it's one of the things that I've, you know, how many things have we had problems with even just in the past two and a half years since I've been here where there's something where if we had a resource in the building, maybe we could have had conflict in butterly. Maybe we would have had, you know, the department heads, you know, how many times have we sat here and Kevin's talked about hiring somebody and said, it'd be really nice to have a resource if one's questioned off.
That's the reason I asked Jeff, when I, I'd rather do what the answer was before I asked the question about the school. That's why the administrator's now.
Yeah, and I understand where you're coming from. I mean, yeah, I mean, we won't be able to.
It has what we need here.
What?
The administrator.
I know, but if you have an administrator, they can't oversee any of the elected officials anyway. So it doesn't, I mean, to me, it, it, you know, plus an administrator would have to be full-time. You'd be talking hundred thousand dollars plus. But it all comes down to, you know, this we can get done for probably a lot more effective rate and we can see if it works and if it doesn't work.
Like you just said.
We're out a year or two and we try something different.
Like you just said, what control do we have over the elected official?
But to me, I don't think it's an issue of control of the, over the other elected officials. It's about giving those elected officials the resources to do their jobs properly. And so essentially, I mean, and I'm, I'm open to the idea of possibly adding it to somebody's, you know, job essentially to their description if that's something we have to do, if we don't think we can fit it in some other way. But I think when you come down to that, then you're going to talk about additional training, costs with all those kind of things as well. Whereas if we bring somebody in that has background and maybe they just need a little bit of re-up training or something like that, your costs are going to be held and checked there. I mean, I just don't think it's fair to a point, and I understand how the school does it as well, but to put something as important as hiring, hiring and firing backgrounds, conflict resolution, all of those things on to somebody that essentially has no training. I mean, I, I wouldn't feel comfortable as an employee trying to handle those things, you know, essentially flying by the seat of my pants. It would be very difficult to do that, so.
Hopefully with the state's attorney that she could help us on some of those issues also.
Yeah. How comfortable, yeah, how comfortable are you with employment law?
Not uncomfortable with employment law. It is something to think about because as you say, a resource to your department heads. How many people, how many departments have the evaluations? How many know how to do them? How many do them? How many know how to terminate somebody, thank you. And I, and I, I mean, there's all those issues that people don't.
And there's a proper way to, when you're, maybe you're having a difficulty with the employee to, to file it, to document it, to then build a case for that termination so that you don't have the Department of Labor coming back at you with a, a claim and you've got a problem. And that's where I think we need at least some kind of help. I don't, and I, I don't, I agree, I don't know how we get there, but I think we have to get there somehow. And we have to make a decision within the next couple of months on how we're going to do it, at least in my opinion, because we've got to figure out how we can fit it in a budget. Whether it's finding dollars someplace else or whatever.
Chuck indicated he wasn't going fishing anytime soon, so I mean, he'll be a good resource. At least for a while.
Maybe he should go fishing and Devil's Lake should be his destination.
There you go.
I can take him back up to your app and.
That was going to be one of my questions, you know. However, we decide to move forward on this, whether it's, you know, it sounds to me like an independent contractor is kind of a, doesn't sound like we have a whole lot of appetite for that. We want to do something in the building, whether it's adding to somebody's job description and or hiring somebody as a part-time individual. Would Chuck, did you ask Chuck whether he'd be willing to help us develop the job description parameters, things like that?
He will.
I assume he would.
I didn't ask.
No, but he, Chuck's pretty late back.
So it would be a spoiler.
Chuck's pretty late back after, you know, he was up here for the, the search.
He did get, but he's already provided like a list of interviewing questions to you at this point, so.
Lucas, you got any questions?
Um, well, I mean, I think it's been a really good discussion and I think that we absolutely need to take action and, and get somebody hired. And I think that the best course of action would be to try to get somebody who does have the training and the background that we're not just adding another hat to, to someone who's already been in the building wearing a bunch of different hats and then expecting that they're going to be able to take on that responsibility seamlessly. But I think that it's one of those things like nobody really thinks that they need homeowners insurance until their home burns down. But the benefit of, of an HR person is they're not just insuring, they're also like a sprinkler system to stop any fires from, from starting in the first place.
Did Chuck give you any inclination as to, you know, if we hired somebody part-time pay rate on an hourly basis, anything like that? Do we have any idea where to start with what number?
We haven't had a discussion about salary and that's very asking me on my idea of how to like hire managers.
I mean, I, I think that would be my next, my next question is, you know, what, what kind of dollar figure are we looking at? Cause that might.
You weren't thinking a lot more than fourteen, were you?
Not necessarily, but for next year it'll be more than fourteen, it's going to have to be. There's no way you're going to get somebody in here for that kind of money, I don't think.
I think if you start looking around at HR positions and what they're paid, one, I don't think you're going to find anybody qualified in a, in a part-time position that's willing to come for fourteen thousand or, or anywhere, even multiply that. I, I think, and I just, looking around the building, I don't think there's anybody that has the, the time to a HR position and give it the adequate attention that it deserves. Because now all of a sudden you have somebody that's doing a half a job at whatever they're doing.
Part of it, to me, it's, you talk about conflict of interest. So you got somebody wearing two hats and then, you know, that, that gets really sticky to it. Different than a situation Candy's essentially in the head over right now.
We've kind of cut our departments over the last ten, fifteen years quite drastically, down from four to two to one to, to, you know, so they're, they're cut really thin the way it is. And I just don't see anybody. Candy, can you think of any, any department or any person without naming names that would, would fit that position?
Well, you'd have to open it up and see who's interested. That's the only fair way to do it.
But I, I don't think there's anybody here that, I really don't think that anybody has the time.
Well, if we open it up to the public, then they'll put their name forward if they're interested.
But you're talking somebody within the building, right? So to, to have them wear another hat?
I guess they'll pass that bridge when we get there. If there's nobody here, then we'll have to expand their search. That acceptable or?
I guess it'll have to be. You know, it's going to, it's going to have to be. It's, uh.
I'll listen to Chuck and see what he's got to say. I mean, I think he'd be the best one though. Did you have any ideas from other counties that are similar sized us of what they've done and how they've responded?
He listed some other counties where they have a payroll slash, slash HR assigned person. Contracting and then full-time HR in bigger counties.
Right.
And that were, those were the arrangements that he was aware of. Whether or not it was specifically a county that just had a twenty-hour-a-week type person, he did not indicate. He's been approached to do some counties and indicated that wasn't an option for him. I just think if you're going to invest in the person, be it a current internal employee versus somebody from the outside, that you just open it up, follow the proper hiring type of process and then, and you're new candidates and make your determination based on that.
You mentioned twenty hours period, though.
That's what he works right now. He works twenty hours.
You didn't say that's what we probably need or?
No, he didn't specify what he thought we needed. He just listed a priority of things that that person should look at first.
I would say twenty hours, we can, we're stretching it a lot. I don't believe we need that. Ken? Wow.
Yeah, it would, it would depend on, you know.
Once it gets organized.
Yeah, it would depend on the person you have and how much they want to work too. I mean, you know, it's, it's gonna, I think we're going to have to have flexibility when we're looking for somebody and see how it's going to work, you know? Cause it's going to be, you know, right fit, right person, right hours type of thing. It's going to be a little more of a struggle to figure out exactly what we're looking for, but we have, at least have to have parameters set before we go looking for somebody because we can't just be like, hey, you know, come to us. I mean, that's not going to work, so.
How about not have to have an idea on how many hours you want to work?
Yeah, just, just, I think, I think a ballpark, you know, if you're talking, you know, two days a week or something, you know, that's sixteen hours. You're talking, you know, but, but I, I don't know, like I said, what, what the cost is going to be because, you know, a full-time HR person makes pretty good money, I believe, overall. So if you're cutting that down to like quarter time or halftime, you know, extrapolating accordingly. I, but to answer your original, I don't know four, three, but I think you're going to be more up in that mid to high twenties. At least in my mind, at least, I, I don't know for sure, but I just.
If it's part-time, then that's it, then there's no benefits and that's.
Well, yeah, of course, we, we don't, yeah, we don't have to pay for benefits, but we'd have to pay for, you know, payroll insurance and all that kind of stuff. So you'd have to factor that into salary and, and they would fall under any kind of blanket policy we have to liability and all that, we're already paying their enders, so that would be a problem. So I mean, just be able to figure out how many hours you want to work, what's a reasonable rate on an hourly basis and figure out how much you want in the building.
What do departments are going to include? Everybody in the corner, social, including social services?
That would be my inclination, I guess, yeah. You work for the, you work for the county, you have the ability to go to this, go to the HR person if needed.
They've got thirty-five people up here, I don't know. Rhonda needs somebody or?
Well, it'd be something to ask Rhonda, what, what, what her inclination would be. I mean, we don't want to put something on them that they don't want to take or need, but.
It would help to know what parameters their state's going to put on those employees also.
Yeah, well, yeah, two years from now it might completely change. I agree, I mean, and, and we're, we're kind of shooting in the dark to a point of parameters and what we're going to do, but I don't think that's a reason not to do something.
Yes, but don't lock ourselves into something.
No, I agree with you, yeah. That's where I like the idea of somebody part-time to start with. You know, you're not expanding payroll remarkably. You're going to add some dollars, but at the same time, you're, you're, I think it's a positive move, but just a matter of making sure we work correctly. And I think we've all, we're all on the same page that way. I guess my inclination would be to have Carrie visit with Chuck about, you know, what would be a reasonable salary if we're looking at a part-time employee, you know, and then kind of we can figure out how many hours we're looking at off of what the salary is to kind of maybe put it into a budget and even see if it's going to be reasonable for her.
My plan right now, if anybody has anything extra to ask Chuck for a potential job description, part-time salary estimate, amount of hours per week, he thinks is something appropriate for us as a county. Anything anybody else wants me to inquire on?
I guess I'm in the dark on how much training it would take to get somebody up to speed or fill in this position.
Well, that would depend on what the other duties that a person would be. So for example, if you just wanted to take the reasonable average person off to the street, you've got to look at harassment, you've got to look at labor laws, you've got to look at different.
That's educational level then, do you?
Depends on what, I think at minimum you want somebody with some type of a degree.
Yes.
Yeah, so minimum education level is what you want.
If you could answer your question on, you know, what are the courses you have to take or where do you get them or?
A minimum education experience because sometimes people have all the experience and they just don't have the little piece of paper and they do just an effective job.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'll inquire on his thoughts on those areas. And I'll have something forwarded so that it can be included in your packet.
Do you know what, talk to Chuck, Chuck's problem? Give you an idea.
You just got to pay a flat dollar, you know?
Oh.
It's not hourly.
I thought you said that, yeah.
But even if you went with a contract person, couldn't you put something in that contract saying? You know, we'd like you here in the building. X amount of days in the month's time. The thing about contracts for independent contractor versus part-time employees is there's a test that's kind of looked at to determine if the person's actually an independent contractor versus a part-time employee. And so hour setting requirements to be somewhere, all lean more towards an employee versus an independent contractor. So it's like a twenty-pronged test that's kind of looked at in a variety of areas. So even if you call somebody an independent contractor and you have all these other little things with your contract, they're really essentially an employee. So just something that we should be aware of.
I think our next discussion, I guess we should definitely have Valerie in here to tell us what she's doing up there, you know, and if she wants these services or maybe they have their own. I'm not sure, are you, Adam?
I believe de facto Rhonda and Christie basically handle it together, basically. But I, I know that, yeah, they asked, I think they asked the department if you meant services on something. As if they have to, but I mean, there are a lot of issues I had, I remember, you know, talking to her about they had to delve into some FMLA questions and stuff like that. And it gets to be fairly convoluted, I think, at times to figure out exactly how they were doing, if they were doing things correctly and to do things correctly.
Go out and find out if she wants her department to be involved in this.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, that would eliminate thirty employees right there.
Yeah, and that, that would change, that would change the scope of how much we think we would need a person and cost and everything else.
Just a bunch of other million-dollar department heads, you know, in here. Get some thoughts.
Well, let's see what she comes back with at the next meeting and move forward after that. Discussion number two.
Discussion number two. You want like a credit card policy proposal? It's just a copy of a potential one, fully ready to be marked up, changed, so. What I did was essentially took the core pieces of the current eight oh three, clarified a little bit about the internal accounting control of the auditor and the department head. Kind of put in specific restricted use. Allowed for, um, Allowed for, um, the photo of the gas to address that situation and then a user agreement within that portion. There was a user agreement in eight oh three, but I added section four of it for unauthorized inadvertent willful misuse of card. And what that would do is allow the county to recover through payroll deductions, any amounts incorrectly claimed as business expenses. Noting that those would comply with federal and state law. And then also just a clarification that the county may use any lawful remedy to recoup loss from any misuse. So it's not a per se we're going to, but it's very clear about options that the county would, could take, et cetera. And it also clarifies a little bit that it's not only take a contractor employee benefit or anything like that. So, something to take a lookout.
And we were told that a picture of the gas pump now on those quickly now rare occasions was fine, correct?
Doctor's just very good with that, did you?
I was okay with it, you know.
And that's clarified on this too for gas purchases. If the actual receipt is not available, photograph of a gallon's purchase slash price expended will be to be submitted.
And since our last discussion like this, we've already gotten like a month of a JP Morgan billing. We only had one hand of this. Otherwise, everything else was retrieved.
Everything was traded up.
In some form. So, now with the actual photo being taken, that may help too.
This is what we have or no?
You had on this one, if I'm remembering correctly, you had the, on page one, you had authority, responsibility, internal accounting controls, and then you had a user agreement on page two. So what I added was under the internal accounting controls on page one. Clarified a little bit that the county auditor controls the, the list of cards, the user's credit limits, that's on file with that office and that the department heads. Review and approve them, but also somebody at the last meeting talked about the department getting dinged for failing to do that. So there's a provision in there for that, that can be stricken. And then the other thing to think about, well, I added in a restricted use section to clarify no personal or private expenditure, no regular operating expenses. Need to have documentation. Excess, expense and excess of blank must be pre-approved by blank. I mean, those are things for the county to think about, the commission to think about. And then I put in a provision specifically dealing on page two with unauthorized inadvertent or willful misuse of a card. What I was gonna say was the other thing to think about is maybe the discussion that was had already brought the issue to light, so.
On the, uh, the photographs for, in lieu of a receipt, did they say that's something we can do just as a last ditch effort? They don't wanna see that more than they have to? See, my only concern with how it's worded here is we're giving people the opportunity to just basically say, I don't have to walk inside and get a receipt, I'll just take a picture. Instead of it being a last ditch thing, if the receipt doesn't happen, you know, that, that's my only concern. I mean, I, I would hope that our employees would make every effort to go get an actual physical receipt. But, you know, it does read as though, well, I don't wanna go in and get a receipt because they can probably take a picture. So all of a sudden, we get fifty pictures in and then the auditors won't be happy with that either. You know, it's supposed to be, you know, the five, six times a year we have a problem, yeah, you got that picture. And I think a lot of this, in all honesty, can be internally controlled just through how we do things. You know, for instance, you know, if, if the sheriff's department is, needs to fill up overnight, stop at holidays instead of, because they're open twenty-four hours, you can get a receipt there. You know, just small things like that, just to make sure we're doing things so we can get a receipt if we have to.
And you're giving that permission out?
Uh.
You're giving that permission to stop at holiday?
What do you mean permission?
The sheriff's department.
I'm not giving them permission. They can do whatever they feel needs to happen, but I'm just saying, you know, if you, you, you do as best you can and try to get a receipt. Wherever you know that the place is gonna be open or not. But I know that, I'm sure there's times where they're out on the road, maybe they gotta fill up the hatchet or something. And it's twenty-four hours out there, you know, you don't get a receipt, well, you know, that's just what it is. So I, I like the idea of still being able to take a picture. I just hope, I mean, it's something down the road we can look at again. It's an option, it's one, there's no reason abusing it, it's fine.
If you have a provision that I just wanna extra clarify is on page one, and I think it was Commissioner Wakefield who mentioned wanting to see something about this. Essentially what it is, is it's a penalization to the department. If they don't follow the policy and I, I don't know.
That doesn't make any sense to me. You're gonna, you're gonna charge the department.
Peter's gonna play.
Yeah, yeah. It doesn't make any sense to, I think that all, since this all came to light, I think the responsible parties have, that's spoken to. I, I really don't believe this is gonna be a huge issue anymore. I would just like to get that department, that, that little paragraph that the department heads and the finding and that off of this. Other than that, I don't have a problem with it, but. I think it's all been brought to light and I don't know if we're having to, and you had mentioned Edmore. Unfortunately, none of those, if you go back and look at all those receipts, none of those receipts were Edmore, none of them were, were out of town. It was just neglect.
I mean, I understand, you know, they're, they're busy, they got, you know, they got probably five things they gotta do.
But, you know, it takes two seconds to walk up late and get that receipt and I think that that's gonna happen from now on. I mean, I'm hoping that that's gonna happen.
You know, sometimes stuff like this happens and all it takes is just like you said, reminders, we just need to, that's all.
How many receipts you get a month, Jeff?
A month? Not many. Yeah, that'd be a big number for us. Pretty much just buy gas for five or six pickups, that's it. And we don't put the miles on like the sheriff. And you, other than, you know, the only thing, I understand the fraud part of it, but having to make the employees pay for it, that won't seem right. But if it's fraud, then yeah, I mean.
I think take that under the department head deal.
The bolded part.
The bolded part, okay. And, and, you know, make sure that they will review their invoices. You know, that, and I think they should have that type of internal control within their own department. But I don't know if it makes a whole lot of sense to find a department, you know, if they don't.
The other question I would have was, I don't know if technically an internal policy or not, but how often do you reconcile this? So, once a month? Would it be easier if maybe we required it every two weeks so that they would realize the receipt's missing sooner so you can get it done? Um, just, just go to question.
Did you have a statement though or?
Uh, yeah, I don't, I don't know how.
I guess it wouldn't matter because once a month you're getting the statements, you're not gonna know you're missing the receipt till the end of the month.
End of the month.
That's a good point. Okay, guys, so once a month, it's much easier to do it.
I mean, you, you can go into.
Yeah, but, you know, I mean, we're, we're essentially.
That would be double the work because I would say you could, you could go into each individual person that charged something to see if they.
Yeah.
Well, so basically like, uh, you know, mid, so they, like the sheriff's department, they don't have a clue if they have all the receipts they need until you tell them at the end of the month that you checked in their short free receipts.
Well, if they're doing their.
But they should have a fuel log, right?
Right, yeah.
That's all I'm saying. Maybe internally, if they've got a fuel log that says I filled up here, here and here and here, over two weeks, they can say, check it to make sure it happens. Cause that way, you know, maybe you'll have a better chance of recovering a receipt instead of waiting a month and then going, and by the time you look at it at the end of the month, five, six weeks or whatever, they go, I don't know where they went, you know? I just, just about, I don't know if it's, but that's not something we need to stipulate in here, just, uh, you know, department heads can kinda figure out how to do that, I think. Cause each department's gonna be a little different than other operating.
So, do you need more to continue this?
A little more discussion.
Okay.
On page, um, on the bottom of page one under restricted use for the gas purchases, I can re-rate that a different way so that is very clear that that would be a last.
Yeah, yeah, last ditch effort instead of, yeah.
Yeah. Also on, um, I'll take out the second sentence on page, well, the first full sentence on page two. That's more like internal department type of a process. Receipts must be turned in by, like, the end of each month. I don't think that's necessarily something you want in a county like policy. And then also, whether or not there is a, I don't have the card, so I don't know. Um, is there a limit on what they can put on it?
Yeah.
Is there a limit on cash advances? Is that even an option?
No, no.
Not an option. There is a, we have to change it for you.
My, my, my low would quite be higher, but.
There's, there is, there is a daily limit though.
Right.
There's a daily.
Well, I can take out the bullet about cash advances because that's not necessary.
Yeah, there should be a reason, I think, we should get cash advances.
And is there any, then the bullet right above that can go up too, I would think.
Yep.
Okay.
For instance, if we go to Farley, get a truck that it needs fuel and it's over our limit, we can call Candy and get it a bad stop one time and then it goes back. So I don't know if that comes into play on our policy or not.
I personally think it's just to take out what we already indicated that would cover everything that we need to. Covered?
Yeah, cause you basically, you're the only one that would ever use that.
Would you like to take those things out and bring them back to the, to the vehicles?
Sounds good.
That's okay. Anything else that I can't think of anything else?
No, I think it looks pretty good. I like the fact that we just put in something for unauthorized use, so that we have a little bit of teeth in there.
Makes it real clear that it's not necessarily in gold, but you're not shy away from needing to.
Yeah, it, it's, it's good to fix policy when it's only something like this where we're talking about three hundred dollars worth. It's rough for the whole year, so.
Well, and, and that was thirteen years old.
Yeah, and the policy's old too.
Yeah.
So the last item, Sheriff's Department policies, specifically from the last meeting was to find out, I was to find out or look at, look into whether or not the sheriff's office had a policy of taking people from the law enforcement center and dropping them at the county line. No, I was told they do not have a policy of taking people from the law enforcement center and dropping them at the county line per se. I was also told that the specifics of this particular incident with Mr. Feather, he did not receive a ride from the law enforcement center and get dropped off at the county line. What I was told that happened was dispatch received a call of a person walking around nine minutes early in the evening on Highway twenty and the deputy responded to check on the person. And it was Mr. Feather and they offered Mr. Feather a ride to the casino and he did not want to go to the casino. He was, I assume, and this is an assumption, making his way to his home, would be my guess. The deputy could not take him fifteen or twenty miles into Benson County. He did not want to be dropped off at the casino and asked to leave a vehicle. That is what the sheriff's office told me about this specific instance. Law enforcement has, I'll just say this specifically about it and then we'll tell you the other agencies that I did speak to, what some indicated they do and what some indicated they don't do. Law enforcement has crime investigation functions, they have public safety functions, they have community caretaking functions. And depending on the function of what law enforcement is doing, they have different levels of authority that they're operating here. So, if they come upon a person who appears to be intoxicated, appears to be medically something wrong with them, there is a, there's an ability to detain that person. Specifically, if somebody's intoxicated, they can take them in on hold. Because it's not safe to lead them out and about where they're at. If they're doing investigation and they have probable cause, they have the authority to even arrest somebody, take complete seizure of them under the Fourth Amendment to the Constitution. And so that's in the crime type function of law enforcement officer. Community caretaking is checking on the person that's on the side of the road walking. Community caretaking is if I'm driving home tonight after this meeting and I'm below a tire, they can pull up and ask me if I wanna ride to Edmore to the next road to make a phone call for me. They're not required to and they can't. If I decide I wanna get out somewhere, they don't have any authority to put me somewhere. Me being not intoxicated, not medically unable to make a decision, you know, not blowing from the head or, you know, something. And that's just a very basic kind of distinction of different functions and different authorities that law enforcement people have. Now, I am not advocating or saying one way or the other specifically about this particular situation, other than I found out that there is no specific policy about transporting people and dropping them at county lines, be it Benson County line, be it Nelson County line, Ward County line, whatever, or County line, so. I've talked to other agencies and they're kind of all over the board. Don't give rides. Well, we don't give rides, but sometimes we'll get Bob a ride home from the bar at two AM. But picked up people and taken them as far as the county line, hitchhikers on Highway two, hitchhikers on twenty-nine. I mean, so it's kind of an all over the place response for people that are willing to respond all the way back to absolutely do not do it. No unauthorized users take, or riders take policies. So that is what I have found out about the policy or what was thought to be the policy of this specific instance.
Is there anything in writing?
No. I have been told by Sheriff Nelson that there is nothing in writing.
Hey, if we do have a policy that nobody's supposed to ride with us, I suppose that was written for everyone else and not the sheriff's.
Yeah.
For liability reasons.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You, you can't take your county vehicle and go and take somebody a ride from across town or something. Unless it's for a function that protects.
liability that.
You know, law enforcement is protect insert.
Yeah.
And that kinda goes to the whole crime versus community caretaking, et cetera, et cetera. I guess, do you wanna, you know, the sheriff, I don't, he's not here, so I can't speak to whatever his other policies are, but there's been instances where vehicles have stopped, they've given you a ride in January. They've dropped you, you know, at Tonesville Farm or a building in Webster or whatever, you can make a phone call. They certainly don't have to stop in a non-emergency situation. Most of them, I think, would at least pull over and check it out to make sure it's not an emergency. They may or may not offer a ride and a phone call or call someone on your behalf or not, so. That is where you're at. on your behalf or not, so that is where you're at.
I think this was just a tragedy that happened, and kinda got caught in the middle, if that's the right words, and, you know, I don't, I don't think there's a right or wrong answer, I think it's just policy as status quo, that's my opinion.
Well, my, my first inclination would say that, you know, I don't think there's anything wrong with having something written down on how you're gonna do things. That being said, we can't do anything without having the sheriff, it's his party needs to help develop the policy for what happened. I would hate to do something like say, "Can't give anybody a ride," 'cause that's, no, because, I mean, we have to have a human element to us, if they see somebody that needs a ride in January, I want them to pick that person up and get them someplace safe, but we also have to be, you know, proven about how we do things, to make sure we're not doing something that could cause a situation, you know.
And I think we were proved, but, you know, I, I don't, I've investigated this, I've gotten many phone calls, I've talked to many people, and I know that he also had inquired a ride after that fact with another party, so, I mean, like she said, if you wanna get out, there's no, there's no law that says we can't let you know, you know, so it's just a tragedy that happened, and there's really no right or wrong answer, I mean, you could, you could policy it to death, and then, like you said, you know, now we're not gonna give a ride, and, and your policy said, and, you know, I, I believe that the sheriff's department constantly checks on people walking here, walking there, and, you know, I don't know what the city police department's policy is, but, you know.
I'm sure on city streets, they probably, unless there's something that looks like something crazy's happening.
If you're walking at four thirty in the morning, maybe, but, you know, yeah, I just think, I think they're just, they're doing their job, you know, they're stopping, hey, we don't know if they've been in an auto accident, we don't know if they just stole the battery out of your tractor, I mean, they're just gonna stop and check, you know.
And that is what you want, you want.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Yeah, absolutely, you don't wanna tie your, your law enforcement deputies' hands, you want them to be able to do what they feel is necessary, you know.
Yeah, that's why I figure that, you know, their, their best judgment is on there.
That's why we should allow the sheriff Nelson to develop his own policy.
Yeah, he has one in his own. Yeah, I agree.
I, I do think it would be something when Sheriff Nelson's in here next time, just to visit with him about and see what his thought is on it, you know, we really haven't heard a whole lot from him in here, just to, just to kinda see what his inclination is, if he kind of excited, goes the way to go, or if he wants to write something down, so he has a written policy on how we're gonna handle things, and then, you know, like I said, I would just hate to develop something, and then, you know, it's, it's his department, he's the executive official, why not?
Well, and if you develop, and if you do develop something, you do definitely give somebody a ride, and it doesn't follow policy, you know, or you don't give somebody a ride, and, you know, there was policy to give them a ride and something, you know, so there's, so, and I think the way Steve explained it is, it's kind of up to the discretion, individual officers discretion on, on how I'm going to allow that to happen, you know.
My other inclination would be then saying, "Our county policy states right now that nobody that's not a county employee can ride in the county vehicle for any reason, essentially." So anytime that our police, our, a deputy goes to help somebody, give them a ride somewhere, they're technically breaking county policy at that point. So do we need to add something to our current policy to give them, you know, the cover message, and I shouldn't say cover, but just give them the ability to help somebody else that they have somebody on the side of the road or something of that nature? I mean, I haven't read our policy specifically, but it does, as Kevin said, it says you're not supposed to give anybody a ride.
It refers to liability.
Yeah.
Years and years ago, I was in the police academy, and I did ride along with various agencies as a requirement of some scholarships, and different agencies had a way of approaching you, some hop in, show up at this time, see you when you're done, and some had you sign waiver of risks, and so there's multiple scenarios that certainly could at least be discussed and looked at, and.
Well, yeah, some of that.
You can't write a policy to cover every scenario under a sign.
Of course not.
So, but it's a discussion certainly under.
Well, in a situation like that, I think a lot of it comes down to who's sending to the park, you know, how much, how, how much policy do they want, how little do they want, I mean, and, you know, unfortunately, we live in a day and age where, you know, even in a ride-along situation, if something were to occur to that individual, and you didn't have something written down, and a waiver or something like that, I mean, you're open yourself to possibility of legal action and all kinds of things possibly, I mean.
Like Kevin just said, you know, they don't want, nobody riding in the county vehicle, but you just put the word in there, unless there's an emergency, well, if they see somebody out here on Highway two, fifty miles out, and twenty below, I guess you'd consider that an emergency, I would.
Well, you know, and I, I didn't, yeah, I didn't think of it from the aspect of, I mean, you know, you guys are out on the roads all the time too, you know, in the middle of winter, you're riding to somebody, you're running the plow, and there's somebody out there that needs to get in the vehicle, 'cause they can't get anywhere, I would hope that, or, you know, the guy that's running the plow would say, "Yeah, you can sit in here, will you make a call, or if I need to give you a ride a mile down the road to the next Farmstead or wherever," you know, I mean, we live in North Dakota, you know.
To operate or feel that it's an emergency?
Yeah, just, just to give them, I mean, I, I would think that, you know, obviously, we, we would have the common sense, we would have the common sense here too, to say, "If there was a problem, hey, we back you because you did the right thing," you know, but sometimes it never hurts to write it down, just to make sure some people have some clarity.
There's a policy we should probably change, you know, that probably.
I remember one time we did a transfer, we met the sheriff halfway, and he took us away to the hospital, I mean, yeah, it was an instance where we were breaking policy, but.
But, again, you did the right thing, you know, common sense is tough to write in policy sometimes, but I, I don't think that means we shouldn't at least have a discussion about it with Sheriff Nelson, yeah.
That's why I don't wanna write a whole bunch of stuff in there, so that we throw common sense out the way.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah.
Keyword, emergency.
Yeah.
Emergency, you think it is, go ahead.
Yeah, 'cause we can always have the discussion whether it was, you know, it's not an emergency that Kevin picked this guy up, 'cause he's on the way to Lake, that's not an emergency, and, and we can have that discussion when we get to that home, you know. You know, if he's out ice fishing, and his forty below, and his truck quit, well, I don't want Kevin to pick him up and get, you know, get him somewhere.
Yeah, I agree, yeah, I mean, you never know what kind of a situation you're gonna come up on, especially, you know, like I said, if we lived in Florida, or, you know, someplace warm, you know, but we, it can rush around, it can rush around real quick sometimes, and you guys are on the roads a lot in the winter time, I'm doing things, I mean, you wanna have the strength to be able to help somebody else, you know, it's almost the concept of the Good Samaritan law.
Yeah.
Almost.
I don't know if they're legal, rest in division, but.
There's, there's a lot of different.
They talk about that in first aid classes, you know, responsibility for it if you see something, the Good Samaritan laws out there, so, help if you can.
There is certainly regulations that we could provide for the different agencies if they wanted to, we being state's attorney's office, for Good Samaritan stuff, or liability and other scenarios, depending on the function you're operating under, so that they're at least informed.
Just a good discussion, I ask, to make sure we're doing something.
More discussion. Okay, moving on to new business, approved letter of transfer.
So.
There's a motion and a second, all in favor, signify with a same eye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign, being done, motion carried, approved must grant.
Yeah.
Motion. And a second, all in favor, signify with a same eye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign, being done, motion carried, approved county beer liquor license special permit, you have it.
Yeah.
Second.
The motion. Oh, fine, just, just a question, so are they doing something on account?
At a farm, yeah.
Oh, okay.
They're just buying a permit.
They're buying the permit, so they do what it's up, just like, just.
Just like, oh, just like there's these.
Yeah. There's a motion and a second, all in favor, signify with a same eye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign, being done, motion carried, approved lease with North Dakota School for the Deaf Tendon Care.
Sold.
There's a motion, is there a second?
All second, what, what's the amendment in the lease? I looked at it, and I didn't see it.
It's just changing the, into two years.
Oh, okay, so it's just putting another, just putting the options on, 'cause it's been a year or something, so.
Yeah, they just did an amendment, instead of reviewing the whole lease, they just did an amendment to the date of when it's terminated, and they just do it every two years.
Fantastic.
There is a motion and a second, all in favor, signify with a same eye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose, same sign, being done, motion carried, visited in delegations? You must have something, Rodney.
Nope.
Okay.
Nothing today?
Nothing today, announcements?
Uh, I'll just make one quick one, uh, I got an email about the corrections meeting or something like that, Corrections Reinvestor or something like that?
Yeah, it's next Wednesday, I believe, based in the courthouse.
I thought that was kinda.
Justice Reinvestment Initiative or something.
Yeah, I thought it'd be kinda interesting, because, you know, while we're talking about how we'd like to provide services in the jail and things like that, maybe it'd be something we could learn.
I think you'll get that, you'll get information about that, I thought I heard there was some grants that were being applied for to look at different types of options for folks that are sentenced to confinement in the jail, and I imagine some other approaches that maybe are gonna be taken by the Department of Corrections, and rehabilitation, rather than traditional sentences in the facility, would be my guess.
I look forward to it. I will, I'll track you soon. He's done better.
Any other announcements? Jeff, Adam, Ed.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Needing adjournment?